Hi, everybody. Welcome to the latest episode of the Limestone Lowdown. So today we're gonna talk about the what?
August eleventh.
August eleventh, twenty twenty-five city council meeting, and it was a packed house.
I know, this is one of the more crowded ones. Why? Maybe the crowded?
I guess cuz they thought there's gonna be some fireworks that didn't happen. I don't know.
Like the last like what four or five, they've shown up with uh they're always like waiting to see if something's gonna happen. I don't know, but.
Oh, well, talk about how they were dressed.
Yeah, it looked like they um.
Coordinated.
Coordinated for sure. They all, Mr. Lucas, who's the council president, he had on his white City of Athens shirt. But the rest of them had on their black City of Athens shirt. That was definitely planned though, for sure. Um, so this is, there's one more before municipal elections.
And we're just gonna go ahead and post this one. It's gonna be out of order and that's okay. Because it's so close. We're talking about relevant issues and it's so close to election, so yeah.
So.
Let's dive in.
Yeah, let's get going. I'm trying to think if there was anything prior to it actually starting. Um, I don't think so.
Started right at four o'clock and.
We had, it was very, very, very quick. Well, again, because it's like there's one more. They're not doing any like major stuff, I think.
We're not gonna rock the boat.
The business meeting lasted eight minutes. There was like a twenty-one minute break before the actual meeting um started. So there was our consent calendar um consisted of thirteen items and then the regular meeting had like seven, eight. Um, so one of the things though that I do wanna address is Tim got up and asked about agenda items and.
Specifically, he asked about, he's like, nobody's questioning, you know, travel or whatever. He's just like, how much and where are you going? Which I think are very legitimate questions. Um, but again, none of this is provided until you set, you know, during the consent part. And then they go back in the regular meeting and then they'll read it and like tell you.
Well, yeah, like it's already.
So you have to, if you wanted to know, you would have to literally bring a pen and sit there and write it down. When it would be just two keystrokes and it's right there in the me, in the, you know, in the agenda.
Or they're not banking on you watching it and it's in the meeting minutes. And that's the thing, like they have their script that they read, be it ordained by the, you know, city council, da, 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 da. They already know the exact amount and I know that y'all have heard me say this for the last year um or for the, the year, the recordings of all these that I asked for more information on spending. And prior to Ronnie Marks announcing he was gonna run, they actually included the attachment of the bid bids. Um, they included money and they even, a couple of them actually included the amounts for these travel expenses, but they've sent over the last few months. They put it on there for a couple meetings and then now it's back off there. So again, whenever Tim got up and spoke, they didn't even acknowledge that he said.
Nobody did.
I think Ronnie Marks was like, I can get with the council president and we can see about doing that, but as he was.
Have we heard that?
As he was speaking though, like there was no friendly engagement at all.
Nothing.
Um, again, Tim is the one that has asked several questions. Um, it's definitely clear how they treat you based on who you are. So anyways, we dive in.
Well, if you're not talking about something they wanna hear about, you know, then you can talk more than three minutes, but if if it's something they don't care about or something that they do not wanna listen to, three minutes, you're, it's up, get out.
They'll just give you a blank stare and like this, for example, like they didn't really give a hill of beans um that he was asking for that. Um, so anyways, uh diving in, resolution to approve travel expenses for personnel of the street department. Um, that was two hundred and twenty-nine dollars and sixty-four cents for Heath McQuay. Um, resolution to approve travel expenses for personnel of the public works department, Mike Griffin, six sixty-one fifty-eight. Um, resolution to approve travel education expenses for personnel of the cemetery parks and recreation department. Um, seventy-nine dollars. Um, resolution to approve travel and education expenses for personnel of the electric department. Hunter Allen, two sixty-seven oh seven. Clifton Kirby, there was another person that traveled, but neither one of us actually caught those amounts. And I'm just gonna go ahead and go over to, there was two more um that they paid for travel for Councilman Wells and President Lucas, I think. I thought Mr. Lucas went somewhere too.
He did because he had to turn it over to uh
Mr. Harper?
To Harper.
Okay, yeah, so resolution to approve travel education expenses, six twenty-three ninety-six. And then um Mr. Wells was seven oh, seven oh three eighty-eight.
And remember, he joked, he said his is, that was very important.
Important, yeah.
Everybody laughed at that.
Resolution to approve travel education expenses for Councilman Wells. That's where he went to that.
Electric Cities Conference?
In Kentucky, yeah. Um, and it's like we're, they don't he, that's the only one where they said that he was going.
Correct. That was only one. None of the rest of them, it's like, okay.
Yeah, they don't mention like anything else of where they're going, just like what it costs. Um, but again, it's like you have to ask for these amounts. And you know, whenever I've asked about amounts, you know, and other people have actually gotten up. Ask, I cannot remember that guy's name that was kinda there. He just came to a few meetings. Um he actually asked during agenda items and they gave him those numbers right then. They didn't even offer those numbers up.
Do you know who wasn't there today?
Who?
Mr. Marshall.
He wasn't, was he?
Cuz he's been pretty much on your train about.
More information.
More information, yeah. Missed him today.
Yeah, he was not there. Um, so resolution to declare the following as a surplus to be sold at public auction on govdeals.com for the electric department. A twenty sixteen Dodge Ram twenty-five hundred, a twenty seventeen Freightliner with Digger Derrick, twenty thirteen Chevy Silverado and Massey Ferguson MF twelve forty-six tractor. Um, that was for the electric services department. Resolution to declare a two thousand and six Ford Expedition as a surplus to be sold at public auction on GovDeals for the IT department. A resolution to approve the purchase of a Turfco Metermatic IVF twelve E top dresser from Veerd Equipment and a cost not to exceed fifteen thousand to be funded from the Parks and Recreation Department's existing capital expenditure. Um, resolution to approve the purchase of a Manitowik ice maker from Baker Distributing at not to exceed sixty-five hundred to be funded from the Streets Department. Existing capital expenditure, uh, resolution to approve the purchase of a jet drill press from Granger, not to exceed three thousand to be the Streets Department. Um, IT director to purchase network cabling not to exceed twenty-five hundred. Um, resolution to approve the IT department to purchase two Chevy Trax from Donahue Chevrolet.
But let's hold on a second. Go back to that resolution, Jay, the new building on Hob Street. I don't think we've talked about what's gonna be going in there, have we? I don't remember.
I don't think so.
So let's just see where that goes. I'm not saying I know where it's at either. I, I, I literally have no clue. I remember them buying it. I remember them now furnishing it with IT stuff.
Yeah.
But I don't remember, you know, what's actually going there.
Actually ask that. We need to hold that on the back burner and ask them for, for next time what they're planning to do cuz I do remember them buying that building.
Mm-hmm. That's all I'm saying.
And then now they're net.
Network.
Catwork, network, cabling networks, patch panel and related equipment from Amazon.
Mm-hmm.
Um, resolution to approve uh the IT director to purchase two Chevy Trax from Donahue Chevrolet in the amount of forty-four thousand two fourteen forty from the IT department's existing capital expenditure fund. Resolution to approve the purchase of a six new steelcase tax seats that cost not to exceed fifty-seven fifty to be funded from the building department's existing capital expenditure fund. Um, resolution to concerning a new tax increment financing direct along near Elm Street and setting a public hearing meeting for the, related to the same.
So I had questions about that. Like, what is that?
Yeah.
What does that mean?
Yeah, so are they gonna do a public hearing next time on the last ones before elections? Like what is that even for?
I guess maybe, I don't know. But that sounds something very, a tax increment financial district? I mean, it sounds interesting.
Yeah.
And uh, I'd just like to know what that means. Is that what, to bring businesses in or what?
Well, usually when they, basically this is for them to say we can set a meeting, so I'm wondering if it's gonna be next time. Um, so that was all the consent calendars. So that stuff's already basically been approved. They don't even have to go through that individually. Um, so then we go into the regular meeting, which is a resolution concerning payment from Rogers Group Inc. for damages to a sewer line. So interesting enough, we've got a friend that works at Rogers Group who was part of the group when they found this like busted sewer line.
Yeah, Rogers Group found it, right?
That was my understanding.
That they didn't do it, they found it.
Yeah.
Like one of their supervisors found the leak.
And they actually had pictures and proof.
That they didn't do it.
They didn't do it. And it was like a whole big stink with the city from the information that we're hearing from Rogers Group. So um.
That's not how it was portrayed tonight, though.
Yeah, I know. We need to.
It, he, they said that they're giving them a thirty thousand dollar check.
Yeah, that Rogers Group is giving the city a thirty, thirty thousand dollar check. So that's interesting, yeah.
We'll see how that plays out.
Figure, ask some more questions. Um, but we didn't wanna ask about that tonight because we heard opposite and anyways, we're gonna do our own digging and see what we can find on that. Um, resolution authorizing electric services manager to accept the low bid of one million five hundred and thirty-four thousand from Aubrey Silvey Enterprises for the construction of Elm Park Substation in Wilkinson Street. And cost expenses related shall be paid from the twenty fifteen warrant fund.
Now, back to that again. It's like, really? We've got money left over from twenty fifteen still?
Well, we've paid so much out of that twenty fifteen.
I know. That must've been a real good year. That warrant fund is this jam-packed. That's what I'm saying. You would think they would like transfer it over or something.
And what is that Elm Park Substation?
Power station, yeah.
Okay, okay. Yeah.
Cuz that's right, when it said Wilkerson, that's where the, the headquarters of the utilities is.
Yeah.
Yep.
Um, so then we go into the resolution authorizing William R. Marks, mayor um upon approval by a DECA to enter into a contract on behalf of the City of Athens with Rogers Group Incorporated in the amount of one million one hundred and fifty-one thousand and four hundred and twenty-one dollars to construct improvements along Mooresville Road in US Highway seventy-two to serve the French Mill Development under construction at the corner of Highway seventy-two and Mooresville. That's where the new.
I was gonna say, what is that?
Where the new Publix is going. Um.
So with that, I already uh asked for some public records on that cuz I wanted to see the bids and uh see how it was done. So I asked for the uh copy of the public advertisement for this bid. The contract for the engineer record on this bid, the copy of the pre-bid conference, the copy of the bid bond for this contract. The copy of the payment performance proposal, copy of official contract and copy of any change orders, total cost after these charges.
Yeah.
So the reason we did that is we've noticed some uh, some bids that uh went no, no response. So we started asking a few more questions.
Yeah.
Um, so which led to all these questions. And the last time we did a uh public records.
We'll go over that when we finish this. Yeah, we've got a few more and I don't wanna get um.
Ahead of ourselves?
Yeah, I don't wanna get ahead of ourselves, but yes, so we, Jared went ahead and did a public records request regarding this particular one. Um, I'm assuming they're gonna have this whole packet together. Mayor Marks told.
It should be a whole packet.
Yeah, well, Mr. Mayor Marks told Mr. Lucas, which is council president, I'll send you the stuff over. How did you send it to him? Cuz I've sent him like three or four emails and he has never responded to me. And I know at least one other person that has sent him numerous emails and he has never responded, so. And Mr. Lucas acknowledged, oh, yeah, thank you, but I don't, I don't even know that he knows he's got a city email, to be honest. He's eighty-six. I mean, come on now. Um you know, and just to say that.
Oh, goodness.
From when we did the candidate forum, that really rubbed me the wrong way. When people were asking about the city council meetings and whether, whatever time it needed to be and, you know.
Six.
It's, yeah, I don't care when it is, but you know, some people don't work. Some people prefer to have them nine o'clock in the morning, whatever. But the fact that Mr. Lucas, who is a public servant, his only response was, y'all do realize this is a part-time position. It was kinda like, what? Um, anyways, that was just something that just really rubbed me the wrong way. Um, but anyways. Um, so then we go into the resolution to ad- adopt an org chart for the Water Services Department. Um, so there are sex, sixty-four regular status positions
Mm-hmm.
within the Water Services Department. Um, resolution to adopt the job description of Assistant Water Services Director. So the way that they explained it was basically that they're given a promotion.
No, they're updating the job title to fit more of what it actually does. I don't, they didn't say anything about more money or anything else like that. That's how I took it. I mean, I could be totally wrong, but how I heard it was.
Well, yeah.
We're just changing the job title to more align with what they actually do.
When we changed other positions and we slid people right into them, same thing.
Oh, come on. I know what you're talking about.
Well, I'm just saying.
You're just saying?
I'm just saying.
All right.
Um, I could, could be wrong, but just just the way that they, anyways. Um, and the only reason I say that is cuz it's got they, they're adding an Assistant Water Services Director and then the very next one was an ordinance number eight eighty-eight, which is adding a new job. Establishing a classification list for all full-time employees to add the job title Assistant Water Services Director. And delete the job title Capital Improvement Program Manager. So they added, so they put the assistant, maybe that is what it is cuz they're deleting this job title. Maybe that is. So anyways, that was really all of our agenda items um today. Um, again, super light just cuz there's one more meeting before um elections. But we did have just a handful of public comments. Um, the first one, um, a lady got up and asked about the pool. That was, that's been something that's been on the last few city council meetings.
Absolutely.
Um, what, what was she mentioning about?
She just wanted to say the, the head pool guy couldn't be there, so she came on his behalf and wanted to like, uh, stay relevant, stay in the, you know, uh, in front of everybody.
Basically like, hey, there's some empty spot. Well, there's an empty spot next to Swan, Swan Creek. Was it Swan Creek or Splash Pad?
Uh, yeah, the, the Splash Pad.
And then she said that, well, we gave money to Athens State. Um, so yeah, and then um, someone else got up who is part of the president of their HOA and has been talking about an ongoing water leak.
Water.
Um, at their road and it's kind of.
The, the pipe was cracked and everything else and it's only fifteen year, uh, I think she said it's only been.
Was the oldest, but it's the oldest neighborhood in their HOA. There's four neighborhoods and this one is the oldest. And so anyways, it just kinda, the, the, the leak, it's happened three times, twice in the last year and then three times over the last couple years and.
It's causing the road to pothole. It's causing.
The yard, their side.
To like bubble up.
Mm-hmm.
All kinds of stuff.
And then um there was a guy that got up and thanked the, the mayor and the council. Um, what was the quote he read or the?
The man in the arena.
The man in the arena. Um, he personally knew the mayor and the council and the city attorney had to kinda give like a little blurb over how he knew each one of them, sang their praises, how great they were. He is either a coach or a former head coach and was talking about basically he knew what it was like to be in the arena and, and face criticism and, you know, you only.
Armchair quarterback.
Yeah, um, and then Tim got a.
Talk about Mr. Smith first.
Oh.
You want me to do that?
Mm-hmm.
Okay, Mr. Smith got up and talked about that, I guess he ran for city council back in twenty sixteen. He also did a political science um internship. He got a political science degree and did an internship with uh Rodney Marks himself. And one of his uh biggest things was uh when he was out campaigning, a family on Fifth Avenue talked about their kid had got hit and killed because of no sidewalks. And he said that's been, what, nine years ago now? And there's still no sidewalks on Fifth Avenue and that he, in his opinion, that much more effort is going on the east side and they have nice, beautiful sidewalks and everything else and the, the west side is still lacking. So so Mark, Mark Wilson didn't have to get up and talk about the, the sidewalks. Mr. Smith did it for him.
Said that.
But it's still relevant, you know.
That he hoped that people were waking up and that we're gonna vote all of them out. It was just kinda funny. Um, oh, and I wanna go back to the lady that was the HOA president. They, they didn't really um, Mayor Marks was concern, was, did address that, did come over and speak to her after and said, send her some emails and he elaborated on that, you know, that this, that county commission doesn't handle roads and she never asked about the county commission, but just do wanna give a follow-up that Mayor Marks did say, send me that information um, that, that they would start to get to work on it. And then yeah, Mr. Smith got up and talked about how basically the north side is, is neglected, which echoes what Mark has been saying for nearly twenty years, but.
No, he said specifically public safety. And he said that public safety was in Mark's top three campaign every time. Public safety was right up there near the top as far as his campaign goals. And that he felt that he had failed on that front because nothing had been addressed in nine years over that. Are there sidewalks being built? Yes. Is it to where it needs to be? Not at all. And as far as I know, I would like to say Fifth Avenue doesn't have any sidewalks going down there.
No, I don't think so.
That's what I'm saying. There's zero sidewalks on Fifth Avenue.
That, that Tenon Park? No?
I don't think so. I don't think so. Uh-uh. Yeah.
Yeah. Um, so next, um, Tim got up, um, this was one of the things. So remember Tim, they, they have let people get up and speak for four and five minutes, as long as it's something that they like and something that makes them look good. Um, Tim got up at the last meeting and they tried to shut him down and they're like, you've let people get up here for seven and eight minutes. And there was another lady that was like, let him finish talking. Um, and so he straight up said, I've got three things I need to talk, like, can I address all three of them? President Lucas was straight up like, you've got three minutes. And he asked it again. He's like, you've got three minutes. So um, he got up and said, it's kind of my attention that a recent incident at the rec center involved the reported misappropriation of several thousand dollars by an employee. Community members have expressed concern that this matter did not involve law enforcement or court proceedings and that the individual was instead allowed to resign. What is your comment? Um, he asked for the total amount of funds involved, whether then official investigation was conducted. Why law, law enforcement and the courts were not involved in this matter? Whether the handling of this case, the city um policy and procedures for employee misconduct involving public funds. And then he asked Shane Black to recite the city policy. Um, so we'll just kinda go into where this ties into everything. Um.
So apparently this is the daughter of a former city counselor.
Well, we, let's, let's go back a few days. So last week, we got we get our mail, like an email notification with what's coming in the mail that day. And Jared sent me a screenshot of this envelope and he's like, what the crap is this? Um.
Okay, in, in fairness, it looked like every, like stalker, every um murderer letter you would receive.
Yeah.
Um.
Any sort of government training I've had to do with like, uh, you know, uh.
Identifying stuff. Same thing with me with the post office. It's like red flag after red flag after red flag.
Was misspelled. We're like, oh, my gosh.
The way the lettering was?
Yeah.
But the funny thing was.
Well, his name was misspelled and everything else.
Well, what, what do we think, though? Okay, let's, let's, let's go into our mindset.
We're like, oh, my gosh, this is a threat coming in. We've, so, so we checked the mail. We have like our gloves on. We had.
Fingerprint and everything else. We're videotaping it.
We're videotaping it. We opened it up over a Ziploc bag in case there was something in it. Um, lo and behold, though, there's this, there's this uh, there's this letter that we received and as Jared is, he's filming me as I'm opening it.
And I mean, we probably looked really crazy um doing it, but I, I mean, you just never know because in, you know, in that moment, that's just uh exactly what it looked.
So here's a letter. It says, again, like it says, you should ask the mayor why he allowed an employee at the rec center to embezzle several thousand in capital letters dollars and not get law enforcement and the courts involved. Was it because she was the daughter of an ex-councilman that was great, all caps, friends with, dot, 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 yes, all caps. It, all caps, was swept under the rug. This is a very recent event. She was allowed to quietly resign. Funny thing is, you know, obviously there's not a whole lot of context to it, but it didn't take us five minutes, maybe ten minutes to do our due diligence and figure out who it was, what councilman it was linked to. Um, Shane Black, the, the mayor, he, he's a, he's pretty good on his toes, I guess. Um, but Shane Black kinda sampled over it. Um, saying that there was the law enforcement that was involved. From my understanding, she was allowed to resign. And she's gonna still be able to collect her benefits?
Mm-mm.
Um, so yeah, so we're, we're gonna keep, we're gonna keep pressing on that. Um, and see if we can get some more information. Shane Black did not.
And so uh, we apologize to whoever, if you're listening, whoever sent the letter. Um, that was our initial thought. Thank you for that information. It turned out to be true, obviously. So keep it up, guys.
Yeah.
I mean, maybe, maybe do a little bit less, you know, stalker letter-ish stuff, like, that, where we don't get all hot and but other than that, thank you very much. Keep it coming.
All right, we got a couple more things we wanna cover and hopefully try to, try to keep it under five minutes. So another thing, funny thing, there was a YouTube video that was put out by the City of Athens and these have kinda become comical because we kinda feel like that these are strategic campaigns. This started, we signed, the City of Athens went into a contract with Wolfco Media. Starting, I think, in January of this year for all of twenty twenty-five, it was like twenty-five hundred dollars a month. It came to like, was it twenty-seven thousand dollars a year? Let me see if I can find the exact amount. Um, let's see. So it's two thousand two hundred and fifty dollars per month totaling twenty-seven thousand dollars for the year. Um, and it, it, we had kinda already suspected that this was campaign videos and material.
Well, I mean, let's be honest. It's called, it started off with minute with the mayor.
With the mayor, yeah. So highlighting things with the mayor. And just to kinda go over, literally this statement of work is three sentences. The monthly scope of work will include two to three production quality videos ranging from thirty seconds to two minutes and four to five shorter clips for social media. Wolfco will provide all music and licensing optimization for specific publication platform uploading trans finished videos, measuring results and providing an open line of communication between our office and the mayor's office. So that's all that the scope of work is about, but um it just has the appearance that they're using this as a strategic campaigning for the mayor.
Because there was one released today and it had several videos, it had several sections of the mayor in it. Um, and then I think there was one that had uh, that's the city planner, but as far as like city officials, that was it. But as far as like city officials, that was it and it was talking about, you know, the county growing, the city, duh, 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 duh. And I didn't want this to just be me, like. Uh, going after the man or something like that, I sent it to half a dozen people and they all said the same thing, that they kinda felt like it was like. Ooh, this is could be cons- almost considered like campaigning.
Well, here's the thing, the city has passed. The city, the city council agreed to do this with Wolfco Media for twenty two fifty a month. Irregardless of that, whether whatever it is they're doing, it just appears that you they're using this strategically.
And I I get where it's coming from to start with, is like promoting the city, which great, wonderful and everything else. But it seems to always involve the mayor and it seems to be more self-promoting than promoting the city.
And then it goes back to, we have a granted communications manager and a communication specialist. If they are the ones that are overseeing like our social media, why are they not? Yeah, like why don't we have this as a, as this city function that's doing this, I mean. Whether it's not kinda like bottlenecked at one thing, like why are we? I feel like as much as we're growing, we can broaden that kind of like public relations area out. Um, and then also, okay, so going back to the bid, the Rogers Group bid. Um, we did a public records request July second. Um, requesting all of those same things that. Jared requested for that Rogers Group bids today and I'm gonna let him or I'll read them really quick. So I requested, did it, oops, um. Let's see, copy of public advertisement for this bid. Contract for the engineer record on this bid, copy of pre-bid conference. Copy of bid bond for this contract and copy of the pavement and performance proposal for proposal. Copy of the official contract and copy of any change orders, total cost after the changes. So we were given a packet that's got, um. Email correspondence with these other two contractors, cause what kinda caught our attention was. Grayson Carter and Sons, this was a hundred and fifty one thousand dollar contract, this was to pave the utilities building parking lot. So it's a small project, um, what Rogers Group and Wiregrass, there was no response. Why would there be no response, like even if you didn't like, you just, it didn't make any sense, like you just wouldn't not put a bid in. So I guess their communication saying they advertised it or offered it, he sent some email communication.
Both of which said they were interested.
So they were interested, but I didn't see that there was a follow-up and the city, the city um, department was the last one. But there was no follow-up, let's see, this is, looks to be. The Athens Utilities paving, is this the contract? So this is the contract, um. And then, that's the bid and then that's it.
The no response.
No, yeah, and that's why I said, the other two Wiregrass and Rogers, there was no response, but the other list of stuff. The engineer stuff, like that wasn't included. So we requested this on July second and we just got this back. And on July twenty third, which is three weeks after we requested it. Um, on May fifteenth, Athens Electric received a paving quote for a hundred and fifty one thousand. From Grayson Carter and Sons contracting for paving work at Athens Utilities on Wilkinson Street, um. And the city, city council later authorized Athens Electric to accept that low bid, I'm writing to notify. Writing to notify you that upon reviewing prior to the project. We elected not to proceed with this project, among other things, the cost was more than was previously estimated. We expect to revisit this project in the future, Grayson Carter and Sons was notified of the cancellation.
So the city council approved the amount. And then the electric department, after it's already approved by the city council says, wait a minute, it's too much.
Oh, and we put in public records.
Well, let's tell the full story, we called both Wiregrass and Rogers Group and they said, there's no way in the world, we would not have uh, not bid this.
Well, both of them said they were not familiar with the project. Now, again, we have the email correspondence, it does show that both contractors responded saying they were interested. But then that was it. So whether, whatever happened, I, we just kinda find the irony in that now all of a sudden.
We cancel.
We cancel it.
And again, we're just providing the information, use it how you will. Come to your own conclusions, but that's the conclusion we came to, just by looking at what we can see in front of us.
Yeah, and considering that over the last year, we've put in so many records requests, they. Either get delayed, they don't provide it, they go and get Alabama Attorney General opinions to. Yeah, and don't even provide everything that's requested, um.
If the shoe fits, right?
Right, so anyways, um, thanks for listening, guys, and till next time.
And that's a wrap for this episode of Limestone Lowdown. Where we break down the issues, keep you informed and give you facts straight from the source. Remember, your voice matters, your vote counts and your community thrives when we stay engaged. Stay tuned, stay informed and stay involved, until next time, keep questioning, keep advocating. And keep shaping the future of the limestone area, we'll see you on the next Limestone Lowdown.